I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Just a few things to go over. Audience participation, if anyone wants to talk during audience participation, we just remind everyone you have five minutes. Trustee Davern is the one that's going to time you. We just ask that you phone up to the podium and you state your name and town of residence. That being said, you also make sure that your cell phones are turned off or at least they vibrate so they don't go off during the meeting. Can I get a motion to open the reorganization meeting at 7:01 PM?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do you want to read it off now? This reading it off is going to be a lot. You guys have copies of the appointments, right?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the official reorganization list for 2025 into 2026?
Everything on it?
Everything on it. This is to include, just to tell everyone, this is to include our board meetings on almost the last page and also what we discussed on doing board trustee work sessions every fourth Monday of the month. So going forward, starting in May, we would only be doing one board meeting a month. That would be the first, I'm sorry, the second Monday of the month. The fourth Monday of the month would be a work session where the board would meet. We're going to go over our liaison lists, where we're going to just discuss and have better communication board-wise. But it would not be an actual board meeting. It is open to the public, but there is no public participation during that work session. So if anyone would like to come, they're more than welcome to. The difference is, is regular board meetings, the second Monday of the month are at seven o'clock and the work sessions are scheduled for 6:00 PM. And I believe there is a couple holidays thrown in there, so one of them, I believe, or two of them are on Tuesdays. Sorry, my staple rate where that is.
How do you want to work this? Because each one of these things needs motions.
Each one of what things?
These little categories, liaisons, appointments.
Okay. So Kate, can I have you read, just read, I guess, what's been read?
Sure. Your motion needed to approve the following liaison.
I just have a couple of questions.
Two.
You eliminated the Town of Mount Hope liaison?
I did. Anyone is entitled to go to town board meetings, but the reason I did is Kerry Lee comes here. I go to meetings, you go to meetings, Lance goes to meetings, so if you want to add anything, what happened at the Town of Mount Hope board meeting, I could just be in your regular work.
Okay.
That's the only reason I took it out.
Okay.
We always have.
She comes because she's the liaison from the town?
I know.
And, okay, so that's, that's not there. That's good, fine.
I took it out because it's almost like double information. Again, listen, if we go there and let's say she doesn't come for some reason, then obviously we can report on it. But I didn't really put it as a liaison ship for the purpose of, I think the communication's there and I think one of us will bring it back. I know sometimes three of us are there, right?
And the only other thing that you added to not-for-profit organizations? And my only question was, a lot of the nonprofits are already listed, Mount Hope Seniors, Hometown Helpers, VFW, American Legion,
So this would be?
Cornell Cooperative?
Yep, I'm with you. So what that is, is I took out the old school and I incorporated the old school with the old church. That's kind of why. And if you noticed what I kind of did, and I didn't, okay, so what I kind of did.
So those were the not-for-profits you're referring to?
Correct. If it's listed and the reason that I listed it, Diane, like this is going with you, but you just said hometown helpers and Mount Hope seniors you were board on, right? You were board on. So that's kind of why I put you for that. As far as nonprofits, nonprofits could be anything from the Catholic churches having an event, the Presbyterian churches having an event, or anything else.
So anything that we missed in the others?
And here's what I would say with that, bring that to the, bring that to the first meeting and let's discuss in more detail so we're all on the same page.
Okay. I have all my questions.
Any other questions? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointed liaison shifts.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept and approve the following appointments? This is for the clerk, the deputy mayor, the attorney, the building inspector, Frank, so on and so forth. Do you see the list? Can I get a motion to accept those?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next set on here, can I get a motion to approve the following professional services? This is going to be planning board attorneys, ZVA, IT, and the only thing that I added on here was DMS Technical Services. They're the ones that operated our cameras here at Village Hall and also down at the town park, which I have no affiliation with for the record.
So they're the camera people?
Yes.
Okay.
I make that motion to approve professional services. I've read out of there and all the papers, handout tools.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the following planning board, zoning board appointments?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve, let's see, the following committees? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, my only question there was not the committee members, that's fine. I can vote yes. You're changing the name of the village newsletter?
Yes.
That's, we hadn't heard anything about that.
We're going to talk about it. So you know what? If you want to exclude that for now, that's fine.
No, the tidy is still going to be the person, whatever you call it, but I mean, I was, I didn't know if it was a typo or you had changed the name.
No, no, no. Just for people who don't know, if they don't see this, the name change was going to be to the villager. Just for the purpose, I've seen other villages online be kind of successful with the name, so I thought, why not? Don't get a lot of feedback from the newsletter. I know it's kind of important that you get it and the information that's in it's important, but sometimes it can be repetitive, so I was just looking to completely change up the format of it. Not the information that's in it, but get more and have different stuff, like MS4 stuff. I got a bunch of MS4 stuff to go into it. And stuff from Port Alcoa, so that was it. But if you're not comfortable with the name change, we can talk.
No, I just thought it was odd to change it without us having heard anything about it. Okay, so yes, I voted yes for Lee.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Make sure I'm in the right spot here. So motion to approve the following committees, and this would be yard sale, parks, celebrations.
Right, that was.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Can I, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the following official services? This would be the newsletter, the engineer, and the insurance agent for the village.
Make the motion to approve the following official services?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on down. Can I get a motion to approve the following meeting schedules? Office schedule and reports.
Is the subject of change the building department or?
Yeah, I changed what was on here from last year. And the reason why, and here's what I would say, Javier gives us a schedule, just so everyone knows this publicly. Javier gives us a schedule of when he's going to be here. We put it on the calendar in the building department's office. So if anyone calls here and he's not here, we know the next time he's coming in, which helps, I would imagine, the office staff tremendously. That's kind of why I put office hours will vary. Now Friday is the, one of the first times I can remember it might happen months before. He got caught at his other job. And unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it in, but he was here today. So that's kind of why I put to call. And I know Mike, the police chief, had an issue today where you called him. He talked to you today?
Yeah, he called me back, yep.
So I would just say, we have no problem giving his cell phone number out. He will get back to you. It's just his office hours varies, that's all. So that would be it.
One point, just to clarify, so I, under reports, where it says the report must be filed with the village clerk, the county department head each month, and planning and zoning minutes can count. In the past, and I think we had gotten away from it, if those reports were not filed, the individual did not get paid. Kate can verify that because she was here until the report came in. I'd like to see that enforced again, but I think we need to tell people if we're going to do that. So if the zoning board doesn't need, the report could simply be an email that they send in saying zoning board did not need to be closed.
I think the one change is going to be for the zoning board and planning board is now there's a stipend involved for them. Again, it's not a lot, but when they come to each meeting, and I kind of went over this with Sally, it's important that they meet. If there's nothing on the agenda, they still come here and meet, they're still entitled to their stipend, on top of their training stipend.
Right.
So I think that part's important, but if you want to.
But the onus is on the chairman?
The chairman, right.
That wasn't the problem, wasn't that the people weren't coming.
If you want to make the motion and put that amendment in there, we can change it and say that.
Well, I mean, it's not an amendment. That's always been the policy, but I just wanted to clarify, is that going to be continued forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Then I make a motion that we approve the meeting schedule and office schedules as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Last but not least, I need a motion to approve the following holiday schedule. These are the holidays that obviously we recognize here in Village Hall, which, yes, they're all federal holidays and none of them have changed. The only one that's called or considered a floating holiday, and that's for union members.
And Christmas Eve is not a federal holiday, but that's always been our standard.
Yes, correct.
Happy day, Christmas.
I'll make a motion to approve the holiday schedule.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last sheet. Board resolution. Let's see. Kate, you feel like reading something?
Sure. A board resolution to give advanced claims, whereas the board trustees determine to authorize payment and advance a audit of claims for public utility services posted to break and express charges, and whereas all such claims should be presented at the regular, next regular meeting for audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring and approving the same shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the board trustees. Now therefore be resolved, section one of the board trustees authorized payment and advance of audit of claims for public utility service posted to break and express charges, and all such claims should be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant and officer incurring and approving the same should be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by board trustees. Section two of the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve that resolution.
Do you like it?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mileage reimbursement? Kate, do you want to read that?
Whereas the board of trustees is determined to pay fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees in the village who use their personal automobiles while performing, performing their official duties on the path of the village. Now therefore be it resolved, section one of the board trustees shall approve reimbursement of such officers and employees under a 70 cents per month. Section two of this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Getting up there. Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Lance. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Last but not least, board resolution for designation, thank you.
Where the board trustees is determined that the Village Law four dash four twelve, section three two, requires the designation of banks or trust companies for deposits of all village monies. Now therefore be it resolved, section one of the board trustees does hereby designate the filing institution depositories of monies received by the villager, village clerk slash treasurer. Name of institutions, Webster Bank and New York Class. Section two of this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That pretty much fixes everything for reorganization, correct?
No.
There's three others. You have your policy of adoptions.
Wow, they're trying to do this for this? Okay. Policy of adoption, this is number three. I was just reading how it was written. Okay.
Do you want to read this?
Yep, please.
All right. Order resolution to adopt investment policy with no changes to last year as presented.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Board resolution to adopt procurement policy with no changes from last year's policy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board resolution for advanced approval of claims with no changes to last year as presented.
Can I get a motion?
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Board resolution for mileage allowance with new rate of 70 cents per mile as presented.
Yeah, when we did.
So those three we did.
Okay.
Okay. Well, then I'll ask the last question. Can I get a motion to close our reorg meeting at 7:15 PM?
I'll make that motion to close the reorg meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to enter into our regular scheduled meeting? We'll call it order at 7:15 PM. Can I get a motion?
I make the motion for our regular meeting at 7:15.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're just going to move some stuff around here a little bit, so we're going to take two off the list right now. Can I get approval of the minutes for March 24th, 2025, regular board meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just to let you know about minutes, because I know the questions come up from a couple of you. So by doing one meeting a month, you'll have your minutes by the second meeting, by the work session. And this way you'll have two weeks with them to go over them, read them, write on them, whatever you want, and then approve the following appointments.
We also received minutes from Christine for the public hearing that was not signed in.
And it's, you're right, but that didn't make the agenda, so let's.
Add it.
Add it. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the, what do I want to call this?
Public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing on the 2025.
I make the motion to approve the public hearing minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
No mark against Christine. Kate?
She's on the case.
No, that's great. She'll still read this. Okay. Correspondence, what do you have, Kate?
Okay, we received a draft copy of the meeting minutes of the March 24th, 2025 meeting. We received a draft copy of the minutes of the April 10th public hearing. We received the Bank of New York Mellon collateral statements for the lease of March 24th, March 31st, and a monthly report for March 2025. We received a water system operation report for March 2025. We received a list of surplus items for auctions international. We received a fire call history report for January 2025. We received one child communications program change dated March 31st, 2025. Now we receive the fiscal stress designation from 2024 from the New York State Comptroller. The village board still has no designation for fiscal stress.
Thank you. DPW report. Frank is not here and John is on vacation, so I have it. And I'll read it as follows here. The March 2025 water report, the village usage, water usage was 43,032 gallons. The state prison daily water usage was 118,654 gallons. The auction started on the equipment that we're going to talk about, April 20, I'm sorry. It started and it's currently running. I actually look at it every day here. And it will run till April 25th at 6:55 PM. We'll have the final figures for the April 28th village board meeting. But again, we're going to surplus them later on down the list. They swept around the monument right here in front of Village Hall. They worked at Veterans Park to pick up tree branches, also cut down, or cut up some trees and cleaned them up down the park. Also picked up garbage along some village streets, filled in some potholes at baseball field lot with crusher stone. They cleaned out the storage area at Veterans Park. Brian from DPW has completed his grade D water class and passed the course. His next step is to schedule a walkthrough with the health department, so he's getting there. March 25th, Orange County Health Department was here to do their annual water system inspection. Everything went as planned. They worked at the water plant on April 4th. Quicken Bush Water, I'm sorry, Quicken Bush Water System installed a new well pump and motor for well number three. That, I believe, was the last and final well pump that needed to be replaced. They started flushing hydrants today, and that's pretty much it. I know tomorrow they're going to be doing a water test. The Town of Mount Hope is doing a water test on one of the fire hydrants that's down by the school. That's supposed to happen tomorrow at 9:15 in reference to their, trying to get some water from us for their splash pad. Being said, that's Frank's report. Moving on down to the, Mike Sajir here, I'm going to start with you, Town of Mount Hope Police.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We have a couple of new programs in honor of world autism and equal. We started a program called Save Me. If you know anybody that's in the vulnerable population, that could be a benefit. Basically, they register with us, we'll give you a sticker for your car and for your house, alerting first responders in an emergency that there could be someone in their car that's vulnerable, that we can get the information on and be able to treat them accordingly. We got our new pickup truck for our patrol vehicle. It's the SRO vehicle and our special events vehicle. That also has autism awareness graphics on it to hopefully spark conversation, bring awareness to it. So that's one other thing we did. What is the other thing I wanted to tell you? Oh, the radar stuff. We got new speed signs through our grant. We had them on Highland at first, and now we have it on Seabolt, and then we have it on Pine Grove. That's in addition to our two speed trailers that we have, so now we have the flexibility of four of them. Just as a reminder, if you have any traffic spots that you'd like to see it in, just give us an email. There's an email on our website. I think our deputy chief actually emailed him, and we will arrange for it to be on that street. I think that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, what do you have?
Our new recreation program is up and running. They have activities all week this week for spring break. Today they had Lego club. Tomorrow at 9:45, there's a playgroup, and then Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00, there's a drop-in crafts and snack and play area. That's all the youth center. On April 21st, our next meeting, we'll have two public hearings, one an additional public hearing on the off-road vehicle law and another on an update to our pedlar licensing. Also on April 21st is Amy Hassanmeyer, who is the highway department secretary. It's her last day. We do have a new highway secretary at Sleep Ross. We had a new highway employee retiree starting next week also. And then this weekend, Honor Flight Mission 35 went off on Saturday, and there were three Town of Mount Hope residents on that. Mia Ortiz, Jim LaCarty, and Edward Zemmatt, who's actually also a village resident. It was a rocky start to the morning with the snow, but they had a nice time. That's all.
The Honor Flight, just to tell people this, they do not release the names of people that are going on the flight. We did not learn until the evening of the Honor Flight, when they were coming back, that we actually had a village resident, both from Otis Circle, the town resident just happened to live on the other side of the town line, so he was a town stewardess. Yeah, it was a good time, good people, a lot of people, a lot of people, even though it snowed and was miserable getting down there. Couldn't get over how many people showed up, so as always, definitely a good thing. So we got to actually see all of them, which was even better.
Kerry, with the, the new recreation program, is that, where should I tell people to look for the activities? Is it the website or Facebook?
So they actually have their own Facebook page, which is Town of Mount Hope Recreation, but we're also sharing it on the Town of Mount Hope page as well. And she's been posting it in all of the local Facebook groups, the Otisville groups, and Menacein groups.
Right, but they do have their own Facebook page.
They do, Town of Mount Hope.
Okay, thank you.
And they do have some paper flyers.
They do have some flyers as well.
I was going to reach out and see if we can get some maybe for our board, since we have people coming in for trash and stuff.
Okay. Kerry, do you have any update on the new Vernon Bridge project?
That's a county bridge project.
So nothing, somebody asked me to ask you.
Nothing yet.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, they, it's probably not still on target, but we haven't had any updates.
There's no bridge there right now.
I know, that's what I was going to ask.
I think it was talking about the, the mid, mid to end of summer, but I don't know if there's been any change to that.
I believe the county does the bridges just like they did this bridge, yeah, where they knock it out, build it up, and yeah. All right, thanks. What do you got, Rob?
Fire chiefs. March, 17 calls. Yeah, they've been up for calls, four mutually, one wires down, one outside fire, one structured immediate fire, one NVA, and then one automatic alarm. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee reports. I'm going to start with you, Diane. What do you got?
I did get in touch with our alternate member for the planning board, and just thought of that today, so I haven't gotten, she hasn't gotten back to me, but asking her if she would consider resigning that position and accepting the position on the ZVA. So it, all of a sudden I realized that she was kind of an extra body there and already had an interest, so fingers crossed. Little League, I think everybody knows opening day is this coming Saturday. The parade will be lining up the Catholic Church, weather permitting. It's not looking very good right now. Question at the last meeting, I think it was the mayor mentioned, we needed to order a new battery for the AED for the Little League. Has that been ordered?
No.
Okay.
The only thing I can answer that is they did look into that, and they found it, and I believe they're moving forward with giving whatever they need for that.
Okay, all right.
I've asked for the record.
Yeah.
Twice.
Yeah. And the Girl Scouts, Little League reached out to the Girl Scouts and asked them if they would take care of planting around the flagpole and taking care of that flower garden, so they have agreed to do that. Prior to that, and that may be where Little League got the idea, they offered to take care of the flower box that's on Finchville Turnpike, just at the beginning of the, that, that box was actually an Eagle Scout project, but it was never fully maintained. The Garden Club planted some perennials in it, but it gets a little overgrown, so the scouts are going to be handling that as well. So it's, it's nice to see them working together. Community Advisory Board, the last quarterly meeting was scheduled for the state facility, had to be canceled because of the, what was going on statewide with the officer strike and picketing. This quarterly meeting, therefore, would, it should be scheduled for the FCI. I've reached out to them. Should have been this coming week, but that was not workable for them, so I've asked if they can give us a date before the end of May, so we'll let you know when I hear anything. I know that the DPW, I was going to ask John this, but the DPW has turned on the water at the bowl fields. Do you know if they turned on the plumbing cemetery at some time?
I do not, but I can find out for you.
Yeah, because almost every year they wind up calling us that they're down there planting and the water's not turned on yet. So if they could get in the habit of turning it on when they do the whole field, it would, it would be helpful.
I wish Frank was here to answer you to that question.
Yeah, well, that's okay. There's still time. They're not going to plant just yet, not with its tone. And a quick question for Rory. You had mentioned at the last meeting, you touched on the fact that you had done some research on waiving fees for not-for-profit organizations, and you said that you were going to send some further information to us. I didn't know if you'd had a chance to, just went to Christine or?
No, I can, I can memorialize it. All I've found is, is ag and market exceptions thus far. So it might be, it's, might be searching for something that I can't find.
Yeah.
You know, at a certain point. So I found that, but I haven't found everything equivalent.
Okay, thanks.
But I will memorialize that for you, Diane. My apologies.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Lance, what do you got?
Okay, case number one, our building inspector been pretty busy last month. He issued seven building permits, three construction inspection, also he issued two COs and eight violations, and also four I went to court so far and they're two results. So in case you don't think he's out there, he's out there working for the village and for us and for you. The Asian Device Committee will be on the 28th of, um.
My right.
You think the 25th?
Yeah.
It is 25, I would say.
No.
If you're going to be on the 20, you're right, you're right. It will be on the 24th of April at 7:00 PM, but I, I'll be waiting. And that concludes it. You have any questions? Would, um, I'll be willing to give you the number, you can speak to it, you can come to your location and let you know where your violation memory taken care of and how. Not money-wise, but what do you have to do with it, one of your violations. That's all I have.
Excellent. Right on.
Okay, the streetlight program, nothing new coming in with anybody letting me know, with lights being out, so everything there. We're out of our freebies for the year, so that's all good. so that's all good. Um the Teamsters, I met with them Wednesday last week, right? Um very productive meeting with them.
Monday last.
Is it Monday? Sorry, you ditched us for that, sorry. Um good meeting with them, um waiting for Ray to send me a draft copy so that I can give everybody a copy for, hopefully the next meeting, and then we can go from there, just waiting on his email. Um Rob went over the fire department, the only question I have to, DPW ever look into that air conditioning unit in your office?
The one in Milwaukee, over, no, still.
Still there.
Then in the green in the back, that line behind the new building, that I dug out, I hand dug it, but it's gotta be dug out, and John said he looking to put in another pipe, so water main pipe or green pipe they have, just need to be extended probably about thirty feet, not just up to.
And also, if you're adding to your list, you can talk to him about the propane line that he used to.
John's digging a propane line?
To, well, to put the line in, he's not laying the propane line, for the record.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Yeah, no.
What is our John doing, huh? Okay.
We're just burying the line, that's all, we're digging a hole for it.
All right.
Since you're gonna talk to him about that, get a, get a record.
I'll meet up with him then. Um okay, where did I leave off? Um Teamsters, lights, fire department. Um that's, that's it, that's all I have, great job with the Easter, I kinda put the town. Wish I left it a little bit better.
In the snow. Bob, what do you got?
Just a couple of brief things, uh the planning board didn't have the meeting in, their regular scheduled meeting in April, apparently nothing on the agenda again, um we'll check for May. Um the only other thing is uh the old school is just um, they've got access now to their grant money, so they're um making arrangements with the elevator engineers and the HVAC engineers for the second, and hopefully third course. Um I think that's all.
I'll make mine quick, uh I'd like to thank our county clerk, Telyeski, for coming up and doing my swearing-in ceremony. Um we packed the room, which was good, the building inspector wasn't around to yell at us, 'cause we probably might've kept it to the maximum occupancy, close, I'm tired of saying. Uh the Honor Flight, um thank you to the Otisville Elementary School for the kids, and they did cards, they did a banner, it was just, it was, it was pretty cool to once again go down there and uh represent Otisville with a huge banner. Um for those that didn't see it, it's on our Facebook.
Ooh, all right.
Last but not least, um Earth Day. Um I know this is before our next meeting, but the twenty-sixth at ten AM, we're gonna plant a tree, uh the reason you don't have a flyer yet is I haven't decided where we're gonna plant it, I gotta talk to John Frank, it might be over on the old bypass road, um
by the bridge?
By the bridge, yeah, kind of where we have that nice boat section, but I gotta, I gotta talk to both of them between now and then, but that definitely is planned.
I'm gonna try to do something with the, the orange and rock one over there.
That's the end of May, you got a little while.
We can jumpstart the foundation here.
Um it's um, it's gonna happen for um, what do you call it?
Excuse me, sorry.
No, that's fine. The end of May, it's scheduled. I'll have a more report for Lance to give to the committee, and also um I'm work, he's working on kind of getting me a finalized thing so we all can see it instead of the little design.
You don't have to cry, you're all right. You okay?
All right, that being said.
Want some water? Can we get your water?
We can turn the meeting off, man, we can come back in a little while.
Don't want you crying every time I step on.
All right, um whole business, I don't really need to go over this, you guys know, I know uh I've gotten a couple of these things, uh but they're due by the twenty-first of April, so quarterly reviews.
I sent you anything on that, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We're on that.
Uh new business, I'm just gonna go over this, Frank and John aren't here, so we're gonna take this and push A to the next uh meeting. Um a float for the Town of Mount Hope Bicentennial in September, um we'll talk about that as we get closer, but um I just wanna be in front of it, not behind it. Um and last but not least, another new business also, you guys have two estimates in front of you, one from Dutch's Overhead Doors, one from Raynor Overhead Doors and Sales, um this is for the whole barn, uh for three garage doors, um three garage door, I'm sorry, this is for the remotes, um the motors to obviously open and close the doors. Um like I said, one's from Raynor, one's from Dutch's, uh since we've dealt with Dutch's in the past, and have a pretty decent relationship, and they happen to be the cheapest out of both, uh I'd like to get a motion to approve Dutch's Overhead Doors um for the installation of three Liftmaster electric trolley half-horse operators um for a total price of seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Is this the other one, so like time must make it be more, Raynor, they're cheaper? Am I reading that correctly? They're estimating their time for fifteen hours?
They're estimating their time, yes, yes.
So this is just a flat number one, so you can spend thirty hours, doesn't matter, this is what it is.
It, it, listen, it's new construction, the electric's there, but uh they were recommended by someone to get a price from, but.
They don't have a hold of the other ones.
It's not Raynor, it's Dutch's?
Dutch's, yes, that's what I mean.
Okay, is that a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve uh Dutch's Overhead Doors.
Okay, all in favor? That was easy, all right, we're gonna read along. Um let's see here, motions and resolutions, Kate, you wanna read these, please?
Uh board resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Village Otisville in the amount of general fund one million two hundred and eight thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-nine cents, and water fund in the amount of eight hundred and six thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-one cents with a tax levy of five hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents, as presented at the April tenth twenty twenty-five public hearing.
Can I get a motion, and we're gonna do a roll call on this too, can I get a motion to approve and adopt the twenty twenty-six Village Otisville um budget?
I made the motion to approve that budget, had read.
Thank you, Lance, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Um Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Kate, what do you got?
Approval of the bills, general twenty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-one cents, water thirty thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-five cents, and fire seventeen thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Pay our bills.
Second. All in favor? Okay, wait, you missed one. What's the uh board resolution now, to surplus the following auction items?
Yeah, it's, 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 was a revised um one that Christine sent out.
Yeah, you can, you can rewind.
Right.
This is, this is the surplus, all the stuff that we have on the auction, I just wanna do it so when it uh gets finalized, we can just.
Okay, board resolution to surplus and auction the following items, four-inch water pump, serial number two zero nine zero five two eight zero zero three one, four-inch water pump, serial number double, and roll hardens spreader, serial number zero three zero one eight one nine one, Ross valve, serial number forty, W R, six-inch, bear zero, turning riding mower, serial number two zero one five four oh one seven four four oh one.
What was the serial number on the first one? I'm kidding. All right, can I get a motion to approve the following, is ready?
I made the motion, I read by Kate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. See, I was asking why mine was different, and mine was different.
You are different.
No comment. Okay, um we're gonna do audience participation, and we're gonna go into an executive session, so audience participation, all I ask again is just come up to the podium, state your name, where you live, uh for the record, and um you have five minutes to do so, so anyone that would like to come up, go ahead, podium break. I think we're gonna get up for audience participation. Audience participation, anyone? Okay. That being said, I'd like to get a motion to um enter executive session at seven thirty-nine PM. All in favor? I just wanna remind the audience that the cam quarter stays on when we go into executive session, and it is recording, uh I only say that because sometimes people don't realize that, but um we will be coming back, um Rory will be coming back after executive session, and.
It depends on what's discussed in there, whether you take action, but um if no further action other than what others have discussed in there.
Got it. Can I get a motion to, did I review this? You did, okay, all right, let's go. I didn't catch it. I'm almost every time I come. Yeah, okay. I'm like.
I like it better.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm reading it next week, but then what if you get, so, and I said, so we don't have this order approval, so we'll, we'll figure it out in a little bit, and maybe um.
That was just years.
We'll get those vouchers, we should, and get it out. We'll meet that day, I don't know if I can get it from those, maybe, I don't know if we can meet that day, if I can get it the next day, but we'll see. Yeah, so then we should have it. Yeah, so we'll probably next week. I like it, it's good.
I was gonna say.
No, just.
Don't get stirred.
You have a picture by the way?
From yesterday that you were in.
Uh, turning post it.
Well, the, you're in?
Yeah, it was like.
Not that one, not that one, I thought your wife took it.
Oh.
I don't have it, I want to.
I can text her.
You ordered me some chocolate.
I think I put it, I put it in my, so.
I thought your wife took it.
Oh.
I don't have it, I want to.
I can text her.
You ordered me some chocolate.
I think I put it, I put it in my, so.
The other one's so far.
Yeah.
So we're the past six. I want to add that one to the town, but I don't have it, I don't have yours, I don't have it.
I know it was two phones stuck in my life, and I forgot the other person drawing a blank on the other one.
I don't, I don't have it. We actually wanted to, last night, I was gonna call, one of my wives, it was like six o'clock. It was like off and on, it was like.
It was no way it was fine.
Yeah, it was so cold.
Nobody home.
Yeah, I don't know, I wasn't home.
It was cold, I said.
No, sorry, definitely.
Yeah, he just left. I saw him leave one day, a little after they went to him. I don't know if he left for good or just went outside.
You're too fast, I sure. Don't get him excited. It's yours?
I'm sorry.
That's Mina. That's perfect. Like in the middle of winter, I'm really excited about the hot fudge job, she doesn't like it.
Even then, you probably still like it, you just.
I saw it too, I wanna get on the paper. I used to have that friend when I, I get it at. We actually took the ride down to the Newark Airport, a quick airport. And there's a friend, he's in the Newark Airport.
Oh, I thought, I thought that's true.
Oh, wow.
Has it skipped the one on the left?
I don't know. But I think, but we told the friends, we're like, we have to go to Newark Airport, it's around.
Who's that, you fair that?
Someone over in Sussex, it just goes recently, but this is down by Newark Airport, it was so good, it was Sunday.
The street fires. Then below that one is your, from your, right?
Oh, really?
Just came.
Oh.
The train station over your house. I don't know, you get a copy of that. And take the same picture, and you'll see it.
I didn't recommend it.
Yep.
I would say.
So the one used to, the other candidate, used to.
I was worried about the question.
But doesn't she, did I?
Huh?
So that's gonna be an issue for anyone, but it's not gonna be someone's thing, and if we can hold it down, it works, so, she sounds like she'd be available every day.
It sounds like, I, I think mostly, not that you want to, but mostly like overnight, but not overnight later, so we need somebody that's a winter ramp.
Oh, yeah, and she has a, she has a place, she knows the place, so she might have an easier way to get some, you know, or. I was thinking, they're both good, they're both doing similar things, and he even offered that, he was like, I'll be a backup.
Yeah, it might be gonna get you away or something, yeah.
I gotta, I just got them today. They both have a pretty promising.
Yeah.
I had nothing before that.
Yeah, people keep all the fun.
I was gonna read and slap a sticker on my car.
She's actually doing a lot of things, like, not the same, our DCO does it, obviously, but dogs, but she's doing like, she's like trapping cats, and they're releasing an aromatics, I just do it with the, she has her somebody, she has issues.
Appreciation for our, but.
This is where they were doing, they were building a tunnel.
Really?
We got two hundred percent, so we have four, so that's not good. Since you don't have tunnel, right? Got sixty percent, five years.
It looks lighter than, and it doesn't have.
Probably smoother.
That's why I was trying to lay that, that's a trap, playing wall.
Don't, was it, don't make it, he left.
Yeah.
Is there a specific meaning for the?
No, you're not, you're not real sure. Oh, I did actually talk to, like, your favorite person.
She was moving from there.
Because I didn't know.
Here's the more fuck way over high.
All the traffic. Oh, I did actually talk to...
That'll take the onus off, huh?
Yeah, I was like, maybe my private department, they want me in. And they had to do that. Like, I mean, just for everybody, it'll just like be a big help. Like, I never knew this option.
For us too.
Yeah, everybody. Yeah. Because we could have our highway hopefully too, and we'll just be, you know, in such a small town, it's like everybody's in more than one thing. So you can't, it's hard. It's hard to keep up with somebody who's saying, oh, we already get yourself stuff. Like, in a booth, the self stuff, whether integrated or helping with the traffic, like, everybody's pulled too many directions.
Or just like have a ten B cars.
Yeah, just have a ten. One of you by the one, you know, up there. We have to like advise, like, we have to like back and forth to parade route. We have to like, because that is a lot of permits, but we're not gonna get these whole times for the permit. That's all. We, your office, if they were doing that, you could do it for the yard sale, the road closure thing, but...
It wasn't closure, but it was the one way.
So we're like kicking out right now. I don't know. On the ground. Because like if we start, we are working on this, starting at ten, where you go up the hill coming up to eleven, I forgot. Ending at the park. Now, starting out, by the prison, down that way. And then a moment, someone was actually reversing it, starting at the park, and then you come along and it's downhill. Because the one thing you can start and end, it's just come along. People like go, you know, in a second.
That's actually a bigger event. You can get, you know.
And we have, we closed those commercials the whole weekend. Maybe we'll just start out there and go across because... Trying to avoid the state issue, but it's still a little bit too low. Yeah, we stood for the fair parade too. I don't think the fair parade...
That's what I'm saying, like, do you want? Oh, you already said, I thought you were asking me, telling me?
No, no, they called, they actually called and asked. And the mental health association. Kathleen Bell actually sent them over to me because I guess they were something I heard. So she was talking to Mulga.
Actually, talking about nothing at all.
But yeah, any other things, I don't wanna always say anything when you come to your night house, or you're not gonna come to that.
Yeah, if it was like, yeah. Because it's not more, it's not really an event for that, like to... Be a part of that.
Small trailers counseling for the kids at the counter, like, I'm like, do that. That's like what they want.
I know what it says.
It was the state police. I think, I had a couple of pictures. They showed the guy team. I don't know if it's the state police, but it was the state police. Yeah, I don't think it was the sheriff's department. It was the state police. We were asking the sheriff's department, I asked Jeremy to do that, who can have a police demonstration.
Hello, Jeremy. I don't know that name though.
Just don't think, try to make something different. Okay. Yeah, you wanna ask me?
Hopefully, we're not playing this week with this friend race, but if he's there next week. He did our, he does that. So after you're looking for like two nine hundred.
Oh, the house, yeah. It's the same. Well, it's longer. Yes, yeah.
That's on Highland Avenue.
And this house looks... We pulled over together, there was something on the road, and like you can see like where this was, it's like a drop.
They had no...
It was, it looks like it, yeah. You can see where it's from. It looked so much different.
Yeah, but you know, you can still tell it what house it is. Those columns. And then that's the Presbyterian church right there.
Oh, yeah.
And then the one to the right of it is the front of that white house, right? The horse thing.
Over here? Oh, baby.
Yeah, that's this thing.
Oh, yeah, that's my aunt's house.
The pink house.
Oh, right.
With all the trees too.
And they have, yeah, they were lined with trees. That was always a nice street. I wish I'd seen that.
Sam Free and his father.
Planted all those?
Yeah, quarter piece they got for planting them all the way down to Dody's garage, all the way up by on that hill.
Sam Free, he was such a...
Where did they get it from? Where did they get the trees? Did they dig them up around here somewhere or?
Like in the backyard.
That was a hundred years ago. How'd you like that smell, dude?
It was crazy.
Oh, thank you.
It was like we all got another phone, not my wife's phone. But it's still, it was still decent.
Friday, because it was a dusting.
Probably taking a while because it was eight four.
Yeah, from a ground anyway.
Well, it does all.
You wake up Saturday.
It was all different, all.
Oh, yeah.
What do you had about that much on my deck?
Yeah?
Yes.
Well, it was crazy. It was spread mold.
And it was slick. It started pouring at the, like, where you get on the parkway. It started pouring and it was like, it's like, I was like, whoa. It was only doing like twenty-five, thirty mile an hour, but then I'm like, we're gonna go.
It was a field float.
Yeah, and people come by, I'm like, what?
We had a guy come, you know, where Route Six Building is. Come down around, pull a toy, go down, come down around, lost him to slush, took down the side of our front. Just missing boss's car. Just missed, I mean, I'm talking like maybe two inches, three, four inches. Kid told his car, man, there's pieces everywhere. He had three big signs, just missing.
I'm saying, remember she was sick?
Yeah, she do, but they all gone place.
What's with her pictures? It's supposed to, of course, it's supposed to rain on Saturday.
She, um, she gets sifted. Yeah, yeah, that's why. Yeah, no problem. But I think she might be on a tail end, you know, she might be going to school. But, um, yeah, it happened early today. She just went from there and I said to Kenny O'Leary. Yeah, it's awful to see.
I can remember one in Little Town.
Current weather.
You got there, yeah.
I didn't know what day his name started. Maybe we could have that. No, that's weird. That wasn't my own hand. Who couldn't use your towel? Like, he doesn't have one. Can you put on your towel?
I gave it to him.
Yeah, so he has yours. But we get enough. Now, I'm saying fifty percent chance showers on Saturdays. It's actually gotten better. It was a hundred percent from a snow and rain on the extra day.
It can't hurt the woo.
Right, right, exactly.
Thank you.
Hopefully, um, a year or two maybe, so, three or four.
Four grand, gonna take her a little long.
No, I can't. I took him at a little town shop and, you know, and I don't, they have a couple of like... You know, we come with that. You're like, oh, my God, that'd go along with it. Michelle's good, but she just takes it, puts them back to us.
Yes.
Yeah, just simply grabbed this. And she's fine now. When it started early on, you know, she was a little, she didn't know what to do. She is just, she's a good son. She barely gets done with us. She's a pip. I don't think... She has, it has clips in the shoulders. Anyway, she comes, she put them on, the kids are going. And they come along. She's a little eyeball. Well, actually, I'm... And she's chit-chatting, bye Tommy, bye Tommy, happy day. She's just, she's a joy, but...
Brick spots.
That's good.
I can be watching that.
I don't think she'll have any troubles.
Bought the hunting spot. He bought the hunting spot.
The problem.
Did he? Yeah. How many years did he live? Eleven? Fifteen? Fifteen?
So how...
Fourteen forty-nine. Nine, four. Be exact. Still label this.
Danger.
Yeah, further down the line.
Nice. They're spoiled. Was she one of the...
Yeah.
Parking lot.
No, that's what Michelle says. Because they're gonna retire when they retire. And she says, hey, I just, yeah, you're from the last. I said, I love it. I mean, I've been a year for my life. I love it. I mean, I don't like the taxes and stuff, but I love the state. One of my uses, one of my uses is up there. Someplace I can't really, I don't wanna say it because it might sound like I'm swearing or something. I just, I like the sound to go with it.
I was always to the...
Really was quick the other day.
Why was that so bright? I don't think it put up a lot.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah, sure, it's spring. What are you getting there, stuff? What are you, just rechain the base or just redo it? What? Oh, okay. I thought you said a pole one. So we're actually gonna flip the whole thing. Okay. Oh, nice. I like the color. Okay, the orange. Oh, I like that. Browns and grays. I might did that way, whoever changed.
Text me. I like fresh water, always. Most people call them lakes. My mom, no. Why not?
No.
She's. Before she came. Good choice. She had a. She had a. Took it in her property. That's a fair. Yeah. Everybody's just. These are free for everyone. You were like three or four. Some more things, but. I'm very. So I had. For more. And then she, Brian's like, I was working a paper, ten dollars. Fourteen bucks. Not fourteen dollars. And you. I'm gonna be able to. Yeah, I can do that. Yeah.
I was walking over there. That's all. Um, I was walking over there.
Yeah, no, Brian.
That person's. He was.
And you check.
You always taste of that, but.
But you need. It's.
Wow, yeah. You've here heard of places like.
It's not the best stream. Only you.
I've never tried. I think everything's free of them.
I guess.
Maybe my.
Okay. I live. And then I'm like, I'm excited. And I'm like, just the things he said. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I said, and that's like, so forget the.
That's so sad, Dolly.
Oh, she missed.
I like her.
No, it's not.
Because he is.
I worked.
I saw her as kids.
I'm not working hard.
I think there's something, like, there's a reason. I bet you should be like.
We always.
Yeah, I'd be like. I don't even know what.
I don't know why. I think.
I read. She's like shopping, thirty six hours somewhere.
Somewhere. You're the last one to get yours. I like the words.
I don't care.
Fifteen, fifteen. I buy.
Well, can I? The only dish was Sunday, I know it's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because, and that was right at the border.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't know. Yeah. Yeah. You know, we know.
There's a.
We're, we're.
I said, my.
You're there.
Don't make.
I was, I was. I was trying for work, I was like.
My customer. Don't miss, you're like walking out.
I know, I'm like.
I trash mine. I should crack it every time, and then I took the gold, and then I cracked it, and then I trashed my home like three seconds later.
Sister.
No, I know, I took my own, cause it started me crazy, like I cracked it, and then I trashed my.
And I was just like.
Oh, that's.
Where you're in the. Uh, we need to go out on a ride. Here, try to come.
Oh.
Isn't that. Me, Brian, who's like. Brian, she rep, she rep, she rep.
We used to have to come upstairs, I'm like, why are we here climbing?
And he's like, in the shoes. He's like, in the shoes.
It was travel.
What about where she started?
It was one. Road.
How to.
Crossed. On level. With the.
So it's better.
And the large dog like. Yeah, just.
And they, we're in the summer, and they're kind of like, all our sheets. No.
And I need them. And I'm sure that we could go to three.
It's my time, I'm gonna ride the center, they're gonna come.
Got the.
Capricorn.
I didn't.
Yeah, I'm tired of you.
I'm so mad. That's what I'm. Is there a. That's what I'm. Guess anymore. But you actually think. Is there somebody outside?
I don't think so. I heard the door.
I saw, I could see a reflection in the window, maybe it's. I could see like the outside window, if it's somebody in the back of the back door.
We call two liters. Get two liters.
Oh, that's.
I said, how proper, I was like, places like this. I said, I'm not.
Here. Here. This is.
Regen, regen east, bro, for Germany.
I don't know, I. Because we used to go.
Yeah. Yeah, I just.
They're all.
We think a lot of.
All in guys on my guys.
I don't think you've seen me, I just talk, it's gonna be like.
I don't see.
You know what I mean? But, I was. They're great, but. We're much. They don't want your attention. Okay. We have a stop.
So.
Hope for it. For.
Not very.
Yeah, yeah, work, work.
So, they're not used to. So quarters. I'm not. The higher ups.
They don't play, they don't have to be home. No.
See, and I was just gonna say, see, I don't like that, because that's all I would think.
I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like.
Four weeks before I started. In Texas.
Oh, wow, yeah, I wouldn't like that.
Two days in.
I don't want to deal.
Over. What's March? I said, it's really some of the people tonight, you're hanging out.
Like, I just like the whole.
I got six. I got to be here and then. Twenty seven days of December.
It's just like.
Twenty. You guys, you guys are others, you got them. Each ship has three. So that's, you know, my ship can last two on there. I got one until it's over.
Like that.
If you're out there.
But it's strong. I just say.
But, you know, it's, it can be perfect, like. And I just feel like.
It's, it's better.
And nobody's telling you. I just get my smile like you, like I'm like. Yes. And I'm just like, but right now, I'm. And then.
So man.
And like, I get it.
I get it, you got.
I just.
So.
One week. I didn't know.
It's like. What do you want to do?
Or, we have. So.
It's like.
I got it all, two ships.
Thankfully.
My house, now. Why? Because it was early, so you have to.
It's not like. It's a muscle anyway. But I, I feel like it would be a big, they'd have, I would be like.
Which, which.
Not that you can't have a choice.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't.
We'll take it all.
That was there for a long time. Before they took it down. We used to get a. When he was a fireman. Seven months.
Now, is that.
Yes, but, well, I, no. It was the hotel. It was. I know where it is. I was fulfilling. First. That was a long time. But I didn't.
Someone's talking at last.
Midnight. Nine. Four hours. Twelve hour shift. So even if you pull this guy and say, hey, I'm nervous.
In the. I guess. In the.
You're still. There are three of us, seven days.
Yes. All of it is. All day.
Seven hours, I should just finish seven days.
Yeah.
Now, two, seven, I think, and then I go back there.
As if. But you come out, like you were thirty and up.
Four eight seven. Twenty seven, twenty seven.
Thirty two hours.
That's.
We were. Actually, I. In the winter. Well, it was funny, cause like, I had a good port this morning. I changed, like, I don't. So, I had a. I'm like, I'm like. 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 I changed, and she was like, I was wondering. No, I knew where this. I, I wanted.
My mom's always. My mom used to live there.
I'm.
We got.
Sleep.
Yeah.
They were off.
Oh.
I know, it's like. The only time I watched Facebook and guardian, I mean, they created. I'm like. It was. It was.
He doesn't really tell you.
I'm off on three of them days, so it's my.
The road series.
I don't wanna go.
Say, hey, yo, make four sixty six.
Yeah, just.
We got surprised. The sex side. We get the last day, we're way wrong. It's not there, and so say, hey, you got to fill this, or of course, I. And then we're talking. I went down.
They would have.
Go home. Then you're calling. And I was like. And I was like. When I.
At least you're stuck. It's. He's.
Pirate. And I'm like. I'm. Something's. Probably.
Well, I'm. We're.
I was. You have sixteen.
Someplace where I had. We have one, I don't mind. Keep this up. It would be. Kind of.
Shatter.
No.
Be out there on Tuesday. Yeah.
I was like, I'm excited. So. I don't know what she had.
You may.
I don't have. I can't hear him, but I don't. He's so much.
That's one.
You have any cats, Mike?
Yeah.
Two dollars.
I'm asleep.
The cat, we try to keep outdoors as much. I'm allergic, so. Um, we do have a whole wood floor.
But that'd be allergic though, you know, like cattle is in the basement now.
She rescued the cat, and she's good. I hate old cats. But she is just. I wish I wasn't allergic to her.
We can.
She likes.
I like the sun.
Cuddle and stuff, I don't know. I would, I would.
Thomas. I have. Because. It was like, this is more different, the temple looked like that. It was like semi thin, it was. It's like, it's like. Like some. So, it was when I lived outside. And it was a little bit outside. Then. They will not. It should cost me a lot more. Even now. I have the. So then I'm like. We have. Things just can't say. Now, it's in the basement.
You know.
My. But I thought it was good to stay in the. All type of down, it's spreading. Doesn't matter, once. Wow.
Yeah, like for the winter, you had to keep running some.
Yeah.
It's already trying out.
Oh, see, mine. Who would have pulled up and like. To you.
No, I'm. I never.
It's crazy. Watch your go. That's what we change.
Funny was that he said, good safe.
She like, you would. He moved that. I thought, I don't know.
But she did. Rest place. Being a heart of love. I forgot who called my wife. I'm against it, but. It was part of that known, in that situation.
Was there really no. From other kids? And then all of a sudden, I was just like. I thought he was older, but. So I just. My girl. I didn't get the temper to. But I forget. I thought he could make teams where it's the. It's. It's probably a twelve cap, but.
I don't know.
What happened. I have no idea. Went back here. So. He's pretty old, so he's not. He's a hair tie. Did that one, our hair tie? Like, it's mine.
Yeah, you love it.
That's what I'm afraid of. That's what I've always wanted to say. We first had a. Twice, like what if you. Anyway, he was recording, he'll get him. And I wouldn't want to know. I never see it again.
Yeah, she'll say to me, I think, maybe he's gonna say.
Yeah, he likes. They, no, but I need to.
Back over there with.
She was, um, a cat.
And the cat was like, we're still here. And nobody knows. So they don't, so they don't. Over and over, because they would try to. She's on the bus, she's on the bus. She might, so. I love the last inch. And the cat was like, we're still here. And nobody knows. So they lost, like, well, let me feel better than before. And I don't, but, uh, we're new people. But I think we have a lot of people I can't find. I can't, I was not. Because he always tried to get it.
Kevin. That's a good, Kevin.
Can they do? He's not. I felt bad. Did you hold it at your door? Wait a minute. The credits, my cat's probably going to the cat's door. It's probably something. Probably. Your person you're talking about. So when she hours.
They were like. That's why you don't want it, he and the garden will destroy it.
But that's how I would talk about it. Part of it. The time did you take through those pictures? There's a while after they went. So. Yeah.
So I talked to Brian. So. I'm worried that my wife's right now. Living, because then all you hear is chainsaws and police players and.
Something forty two. So not quite.
Investigation, my own. He's supposed to bring to. As far as I know, you have work. He just got, I guess he got hurt for something. But it's just stirring the wind. Somebody else could do it. Maybe like to get your. You can mount one by one. Like he doesn't speak English. I got to, I couldn't do it. And he got to take a mountain. It's all everything.
It was so.
Those songs exist.
Okay.
That's what they showed me when I phoned.
Oh.
That's what they showed me when I phoned. That's what they showed me when I phoned.
Oh, a little tiny one.
He's good, man. He looks like. He's a little. He's good, man. He looks like. He's a little.
I was very impressed with what I.
Actually, I checked that one as soon as I went into.
Oh, you asked your friend?
So I'm worried that my wife's right now. Living, because then all you hear is chainsaws and police players and.
Something forty two. So not quite.
Investigation, my own. He's supposed to bring to. As far as I know. He's doing. Yeah, you know, as far as I know, you have work.
He was just, he just got, I guess he got hurt for something.
But it's just stirring the wind. That somebody else could do it. Me, I think you're right. You can mount one by one. It's all everything. To bring.
It was so.
Those songs exist.
Okay.
That's what they showed me when I phoned.
Oh, a little tiny one.
He's good, man. He looks like. He's a little. He kicks my legs.
Not that I was interested.
Okay.
So I have one down the corner. Fighting, I think, fighting. So.
This one was training. Finally.
Oh, yeah. My people don't work.
Wait, finally.
Don't be so hard for me. We're playing, we're playing worse than anyone else.
He plays with tequila. But they.
I told you to.
Yeah. That's a terrible. Don't. But it kept getting better.
I told the. Johnson. I brought.
Once. I think it's, you won't do it, won't undo it.
Thousand. And then all of a sudden, I need your gun.
We all get them all pretty easy.
And he's like, nobody. I think building up.
I haven't told her.
Two of our, our bathroom, we were in my house. And when I do the.
No, my.
And the ticks are bad. Six are bad. I had three. But I know all, but I took out.
So when I found that.
Cause I had the darkest drops like in April. I had the darkest drops. Like, like the heck of a March, I had three ticks in.
I like it.
But yeah, also like, yeah. The cats just don't, I don't think they had, they didn't all. But they kind of made that.
Here's what it is. So I told him. You first did something by doing it. Cause it got into me. And he goes.
They didn't offer me anything, so I'll take them. No, they don't. They don't take them.
And I wasn't either.
Cat's my favorite.
Now, just trunk out the truck of filth coming. Do it. She cut wood and freaking.
Did you get any better, like running around with this? Looking around it more or no?
Yeah, when you had to hide shots. But it's.
What wants itself?
She can rub hands, I can tell. I can't, I don't like stay with this anymore. But.
My issue is the dander from the groove themselves. And it's such that touch my face.
Or if I'm like, I was on the couch. When I go on the couch. Crazy, you know, it's like. My upstairs couch, like, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I ended up washing out of cushion and just trying to keep her out of there. She rolls our bed, of course.
Of course.
Always sneaking in our.
I know, our cat, it's there the first like. And it's like, right. And then she, that's like, that's like, our big goal, like that's his like. It's like. The day I had her friend, it was like, yes, he was so. And I was like, I'm like, are you stupid? You went there and like, that dog, you're just.
She knows.
What are they? Oh, yeah, someone loving to get the.
Nice, I got a little. I got a little.
She went out. Where did you go?
I was probably called to go. I was supposed to be Saturday, but you said that it was Sunday because of the snow. It was up at that little ice cream, it was not Sam's point. Yeah, there was like six inches of snow on the ground yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
They didn't want, no, they like, they're like, how's it going? Like, they couldn't go in. They're like, don't worry, they're like, come in the snow.
Do we have? Oh, sorry, the. That's why he comes up. If you can't.
And then turn it on. Bam.
They took off.
Where'd he go?
Yes.
That's cool. I should have took that.
She had the, um, we had.
I'll try that.
She's like, I hate it. She's like, I hate it.
I tried with that.
He likes it.
Yeah.
He goes to where he's working. 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 She's like, yeah. She's like, yeah. She's like, yeah. And the ticks are bad. Ticks are bad. I had three. But I know all, but I took out.
So when I found that.
Cause I had the darkest drops like in April. I had the darkest drops. Like, like the heck of a March, I had three ticks in.
I like it.
But yeah, also like, yeah. The cats just don't, I don't think they had, they didn't all. But they kind of made that.
Here's what it is. So I told him. You first did something by doing it. Cause it got into me.
They didn't offer me anything, so I'll take them. No.
I wasn't either. You were like, that's my favorite.
Now, just trunk out the truck of filth coming. Do it. She cut wood and freaking.
Did you get any better, like running around with this? Looking around it more or no?
Yeah, when you had to hide shots. But it's. It's difficult. She can rub hands, I can tell. I can't, I don't like stay with this anymore. But.
My issue is the dander from the groove themselves. And it's such that touch my face.
Or if I'm like, I was on the couch. When I go on the couch. Crazy, you know, it's like. My upstairs couch, like, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I ended up washing out of cushion and just trying to keep her out of there. She rolls our bed, of course.
Of course.
Always sneaking in our.
You can't go ready for the border.
I know, our cat, it's there the first like. And it's like, right. And then she. That's like, that's like, our big goal, like that's his like. It's like. The day I had her friend, it was like, yes, he was so. And I was like, I'm like, are you stupid? You went there and like, that dog, you're just.
She knows.
What are they? Oh, yeah, someone loving to get the.
Nice, I got a little.
Costume student. Now they came to have. People are whole people. Yeah. She was like, okay, that can. We're here. So. So. Where did you go?
I was probably called to go. I was like, are you stupid? I'm like, you went there and like, that dog, you're just.
She knows.
What are they?
Oh, yeah. Someone loving to get the. Nice, I got a little.
I got a little.
Now they came to have. People are whole people. Yeah. She was like, okay, that can. We're here. So. 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 So.
She knows.
So.
What are they?
Oh, yeah, someone loving to get the. Nice, I got a little.
I got a little.
Now they came to have. People are whole people. Yeah. Now they came to have. People are whole people. Yeah. She went out. Where did you go?
I was probably called to go. I was supposed to be Saturday, but you said that it was Sunday because of the snow. It was up at that little ice cream, it was not Sam's point. Yeah, there was like six inches of snow on the ground yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
They didn't want, no, they like, they're like, how's it going? Like, they couldn't go in. They're like, don't worry, they're like, come in the snow.
Do we have? Oh, sorry, the. Right, that's why he comes up.
And then he turned it on. Bam.
They took off.
Where'd he go? That's cool. I should have took that.
He goes to where he's working. 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 He goes to where he's working.
Do we have? Oh, sorry, the. Right. That's why he comes up. If you can't.
And then he turned it on. Bam. Boom.
They took off.
Where'd he go? That's cool. I should have took that.
He's like, I hate it. He's like, I hate it.
I tried with that.
He likes it. He goes to where he's working. 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 He goes to where he's working.
They took off.
Some of them.
Where'd he go? That's cool. I should have took that.
She had the, um, we had.
He's like, I hate it. He's like, I hate it. He's like, I hate it. He's like, I hate it.
I tried with that. I should have known.
He goes to where he's working. 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 He goes to where he's working.
She's like, yeah, I believe. She's like, yeah.
And so it's.
I think it was thirty four years.
That's why.
Wish I knew that better.
Yeah. I don't know why they started going. I mean, cause I'm like, I'm like, I went. You know, nice.
Yeah, it's a tough.
I did tell them, I did tell them. I did tell them they're old, but they're old though. They're like, no, I'm fine. They kept telling me, oh, my parents are so much. I wasn't thinking they'd have an house on the ground. So.
Oh, it's cold up there morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, every weekend in there, they're packed. Can't even get in there. You gotta go real early or kind of later.
We've been, I've been a long time.
It has to be, I'm sure. A place of worship.
She's been in there. Oh, is it? You go with the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah, fair.
She got hired.
Yeah, probably. There's like a little. It looked like a theme thing up there.
From sepsis.
We went to one year, I think the first year. Whatever you're saying, it was here when it was like nine, nine degrees.
And the radio station up there.
So many people came because it's so hot. Like, I don't really care. Every single guy.
Yes. Her friend, her DJ, she ran around. Actually.
Yeah. She's like, oh, yeah. So the ladies, they're all laughing, like, like. So the end, they're like, I think I want my every surprise. One of the things I want was like some very special, like all these. Well, at least tickets. It should have been for like. Something like. Like, I wanted like. Jump. I wanted like tickets, like, I was sitting up there around Elmer. I'm like, what is happening? I'm like, do you want to? Because the point where like, the point where like.
Is that? Well.
This is a very safe.
I don't know who your friend joined.
Yeah.
This is a lady. What is it?
Yeah. I wanted like. Jump. I wanted like tickets, like, I was sitting up there around Elmer. I'm like, what is happening? I'm like, how did you get? Do you want to? We just, we just. This is the point where like, the point where like. This is a very safe.
Is that?
This is a very safe.
Well.
This is a very safe.
I don't know who your friend joined.
Yeah.
This is a lady.
They're like, they're like. I wanted like. Jump. I wanted like tickets, like, I was sitting up there around Elmer. I'm like, what is happening? I'm like, how did you get? Do you want to? We just, we just. This is the point where like, the point where like. This is a very safe.
Is that?
This is a very safe. 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 This is a very safe.
Is that?
This is a very safe. This is a very safe.
I don't know who your friend joined.
Yeah. They're like.
This is a lady.
And I'm younger.
Yeah. It's really. It's like, I went to like baseball. When I always like, I was like, oh. Cause I feel like everyone's very technical, cause I can't. It's so hot.
Yeah, I think that was the same one.
Maybe.
Now you might see me. It's like.
Yeah, I want, I want to go back. And I left my phone at the back.
Not leaving.
He's on three. No, he said he's.
Say goodbye once again, I say goodbye.
We were like, great. He said, I'm not saying. All people think I was like, say goodbye. They said, well, he's really, well, he was.
Can you go? No, that's what he said. He's like, I'm not leaving. I'd say I'm a radio there.
I can't. Oh, man, you make me feel old. Don't tell me anymore. Wow.
I don't think I have any snacks. I'm like, what am I doing? Do you like this?
Yeah. He would have been. I'm like, I'm anxious to go.
I work, I had to do my snacks packed today. I thought I got packed them all this morning.
I'm scared of national parks. The movie.
Sure.
Happens in a magical bar.
You're good.
Wow.
I don't think I have any snacks, I'm gonna pack a little more into court. Oh, I do, you like this? I work, I didn't do my snacks packed, I thought I packed them all this morning.
I'm scared of natural.
Sure? These are good. No, I have a big. Yeah, this is like, you can put a bunch of stuff, they're almost like.
That's good.
Yeah, I can put all these, I have a little end cap, I don't, actually, I can better. And I hadn't went down that way, down some of the. It was forever. We've had, well, we've had one, because it's a house with like multiple things.
Some topics require.
I have a free ride. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
It's been so long.
And then it got nice again.
You just go to car shows every now and then, you can go to all, but you like.
Mine's in my glove compartment.
You did the same thing you guys do for him.
Oh, nice. I wish it could leave those. So they have a lot out.
Cause he didn't want to. You know, like, you know, your face like.
That was good.
She's a good friend to my friend.
I'm a stupid W two jerk, couldn't even like tax this night, I'm like, maybe you shouldn't get taxes.
You're stuck?
Yeah.
Can, we have to pay them to work there.
Come on, don't get money back after.
I used to hang.
Garbage over, but land dish garbage, like, she's a poor mother.
And I was just this. I said I could get them, repay for everything, money or everything. But I have my job.
We were at home, cause she had the blue light in it. I have a full light in my open. It's too much, I want to see what you did. It's too much, I already do better listening, I'm like. I can already see better listening. They're all small fish.
Yeah, well, that's sad. Well, we had to make my shop happen.
I didn't say.
Just cover to an end.
What did you say, what we want?
You know what I was thinking?
You can delete that. Five hundred dollars, it's like thirty eight hundred dollars.
Let it more coffee chat for you? How are you feeling?
Good. Why don't you say so, I wanna give you this one.
You look a lot better. You said you were gonna go, fuck all into the fitness center, you told me that. Did you get your membership kind?
Yeah, I got one.
You got like treadmill?
My hips are, still have the muscle pain.
Yeah.
Once I, once I goes, I'll be good. I walk around.
Wasn't it, I can't remember the name of it.
I walk in the yard, it says just walk for a walk.
Okay. Yeah. You'll get there. You're still better now than before, right? Yeah.
All last year, I couldn't hardly walk.
What did they do, they do fusion or something?
Well, my back, they cut the bone out, the neck.
You have a neck?
The neck, they took the bone out through the front, and then screwed the plate in.
Okay, so they have fusion.
Send them her back, yeah, but the neck, who said your back shit out? That's what they're saying, yeah, that's what you were talking about. That's the original Nordic track. Remember, I think.
Commercials, yeah.
Can only imagine with commercials.
I thought it was my heart, right, it was all that. I'm doing injections and nothing's happening. Finally, I had no other doctor, I couldn't take it, I started walking. No, of course you can't, get in a doctor anymore, you gotta schedule an MRI, X-ray, that's like two weeks apart. It's like six months. They're not on early, that's for sure.
No. God help you, your session, Dr. Fox, you're sick at all. They won't see, they might go.
They say, they say. Your shit don't come. To have these symptoms, don't come. I didn't get the story.
Just give me a way out of it.
He texted me, I was like, doctor? I got the can on, kid, don't worry. We were going out. You know Garnet, think of Garnet, we've traveled or something, their son. I don't know if he's a city here.
They stopped taking it.
And it was just on the, like, I always look.
Like, I swiped over to Garnet, I went to see, he had a primary at twenty four. You know, I'm moving. Cause like, I just, I finally get.
Kid now is.
Yeah, that apparently doesn't fit with him. Well, he might help you in a significant, pretty big company, it's like. Yeah, I like them, yeah, it's like so much, I can think of crystal.
That's the kid, I don't think he's tough in that picture. He's not the ba-, that's the father. That's the guy who owns that one, yeah.
But that's just from the hospital, so they weren't your room, and that's just a part of him. They don't go that much, they can just pay for it, because, you know, to really go see the person. He only does telehealth. Cause I had him forever. He only plays too, but.
He cares.
But he only does the teleb.
So say you're going towards Walker Valley.
It's not getting.
Remember there was a huge farmhouse? Oh, yeah, yeah. It didn't do it for a hundred and ten, like, five years, six years. It's ready, there's a driveway there, you go all the way to that.
I think it's like. Like, how do you know that's, you know, like, that's like.
That's all good though, I think.
That's true.
I'll tell you, just give it to me, cause I need it.
And to our insurance, I actually do it like. I don't know what happened, like. They're kind of nice, like. They were kind of sort of told, they're like, okay, call them like a list, like, I, it's kind of nice, you know, like, stuff like that. It just stays in like, what are his, nobody ever sees you, you don't even need to like, listen, like, kind of like, listen to like your.
I guess you go far.
Yeah, you should go far.
Don't you?
I want to have everything checked, because I'm gonna do this, and I get.
Everything's not lost, yeah.
Situation in my life, my heart. Stress test, do your stress test.
Some eyeglasses today? I can't find my eye off it anymore.
Turn on.
No, this is my old pair, this is my old pair, um, they, my eyes don't work right now.
I lost my pencil and my glasses today, they're in my vest, put my vest up, but they're out. Where is my pencil? Usually just have two, and then decide to, cause they're out, I lost two. Uh, well, they have, in the office, but you gotta go from like here to the Catholic church, you cross. They found my stepmother. You see my glasses? Yeah, fill in your head. You should come to work with. Thirteen thousand steps yesterday, twelve thousand today. I'm getting stretched out, fourteen thousand on Saturday. And then Friday was the worst, cause there's only two of us. Nineteen days, let him make it. Too many unsafe people. We're all children. Talk about unsafe, come fuck, work right, work, talk about unsafe. We just redid the whole service building, so offices, paint and this and that, all kinds of stuff, and then we gotta pump that. We gotta look. Hit the lights, make sure, so we don't, even at office, six hundred megawatts. And I'm like. And we go, uh, do this with, or what? Vibration's a big deal.
Yeah.
I did my, you're gonna number down, but. You know, it's not good. So, yeah, you do, then this, and you took it off.
I always do.
You know what it is, it's because I've hired some boys, I need the W four and I need.
But the handrails for the path of the tour are yellow, they look beautiful. Now we're gonna paint the steps. The investors will come in eighteen, nineteen, twenty, come look around their investment. Those good guys, have a clue what I'm doing. Two weeks too many times last summer.
I don't think it works that way. You have what?
That was quick.
Okay, can I get a motion to come back in from executive session at eight fifty five, eight thirty six PM, sorry.
Make that move at eight fifty six, kind of the executive session.
Second.
We are gonna take some action here, uh, that being said, let me just read this. Uh, can I get a motion on a resolution authorizing the village attorney to draft and have charges served upon the village of Otisville Fire Chief Robert Tapola for violations of section four oh six of the village handbook?
I'll make that motion, read by the man.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm staying.
Diane? Lance?
Yes.
I'm staying.
Up?
Yes.
I'm a yes. That being said, I need to see you right after this, to give this to you, Rob. Um, can I get a motion to close, anything else?
No.
Okay, can I get a move?
You can ask for comments?
Oh, yes, Diane, what comment would you like to give, I'm sorry.
Cause of the extension.
I sat down with the building inspector today, um, the mayor wasn't available, the three of us were gonna meet. To ask him what procedures had taken place for the landscaping business that wants to operate now. And, um, what he told me was, because I had met with the, uh, with the owner of the business, and he said he had talked to the building inspector. Building inspector forwarded the application to the planning board. And from what he told me, it's the planning board chairman mistakenly told him that the planning board did not have to see it. Um, I do not believe that that's the case, I, the building inspector and I looked at the local zoning together, and he agreed that, he said that's why he sent it to them to begin with. Um, so, um, in communication I did have with the, uh, with the mayor about it, um, I believe he is going to forward my cons-, our concerns to the, uh, planning board attorney and, um, have them look into it. So, just, I know, uh, at least one of the other business owners has questioned it, and that's how it came to my attention, and I just wanted it to be clear that we are checking into it.
Could, just make sure that, uh, the code enforcement attorney's on it too, cause they'll be working, one checking, one seeing it's enforcement.
That's fine, I'll call it, just gonna get the original, the original paperwork that went to the planning board, get it to the attorneys, so that both of them can discuss it. And, uh, unfortunately, the person who is doing this was told one thing, and I just kind of talked to Javier, and I know Javier had spoken to, um, yeah, no, the secretary, and also to Kevin, and I believe also to Mike, the guy who's doing this, but, um, um, we'll, we'll get all parties to talk and straighten it out by their next meeting, that's fine, that's fine, we'll let the attorneys talk.
If it's at all helpful to them, so they don't have to go through our whole, uh, law, I can forward you the, uh, the sections of the law that I left you to look at, and then you can just forward that to them too, but those are the sections that were questioned.
It probably wouldn't be the worst thing to do all the way through it, that's fine, and the reason that I say that is, she's fairly new.
Yes, yes.
And obviously, okay. Thank you, Lance, what you got?
Yeah, nothing.
Mr. Brian? Bob? Okay, thank you everyone for waiting, uh, can I get a motion to close the meeting at nine o'clock?
The motion being called at nine o'clock.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna say, I didn't think that the camcorder was recording the whole entire time when I did come out, it has been, so, uh, I take back what I said to the board in the other room. Thank you.